Welcome, everyone. Before I, before we continue and start, I just want to mention again the open meeting laws regarding video recording. If anybody plans on recording, please come up to the podium and just state your name and an address, please.
Recording device.
And recording device, I guess. Thank you. Name an address for the record.
Michael Sparks, One Beach Street, Revere.
Michael, okay.
For using my phone.
Thank you. Name an address?
Jamie Farrell, 67 Pearl Ave.
Welcome.
Thank you.
With that being said, we've obviously taken away some of the seating requirements. I don't think it's really necessary at this point. And hopefully, with that being said, the people that are recording will remain in their seats. There will be no recording up at the podium. And if we can abide by those rules, then I think we should have a smooth meeting, along with just addressing the city council, having, presenting and stating your name and address for the record would be needed. With that being said, let's, please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unafraid, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Role call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowoselski is absent. Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 23rd?
So ordered.
Count?
Before I continue, I just want to state that both Counselor Rotundo and Counselor Nowoselski are both recovering from COVID in their absence, and we wish them a speedy recovery.
This was just added to the agenda today. This is Joseph Gravalese, Chair of the City of Revere Community Scholarship Program, will present this year's scholarships to the recipients.
A little rusty. Thank you, Ashley. So my name is Joe Gravalese, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Revere Community Scholarship Program. Just a couple of quick words about the program. It's established by a state law, Chapter 60, Section 3C of the Mass General Laws, where residents have the opportunity to check a box, which so many do, and we thank you for that, when you get your property tax bill, to send in a contribution to fund a community scholarship for deserving Revere students that are heading off to college next year. This program was run by Kay Romano for many years, the best of the best. No one could ever possibly do as good a job as her, and I certainly am not. However, doing the best I can, she asked me to serve upon her retirement, and I've been happy to do so. We were virtual the last couple of years. This year, we get to honor the students in person, for those that are here, which is great. All the students submit their academic records and also an essay on their community service to the City of Revere and what community means to them. And per the statute, the students are evaluated based on their academic performance, their financial need, and their commitment to the community. As we know, we have many, many students that meet all of those criteria in Revere, and these five certainly are among them. They're each going to receive a $2,000 scholarship, which they can pick up at the treasurer's office the second semester of their sophomore year, so look forward to that. And I'm proud to share that the winners are Cindy Pham, who will be attending UMass Amherst next year. All right, this one's for all my Italian credibility. Anthony and Sonia Parziale, who's going to Tufts. Nicholas Igarasev, who's attending BU next year. Sabrina Carion, who's attending Northeastern. And Skylar DeSimone, who's attending BC. And just wanted to say congratulations to all of them. You all make Revere High proud, and every single year, we're so proud of all the students. And if you want to come up and take a photo, those that are here with the city councilors, that would be fantastic.
Come on, Joe.
And just for the audience watching at home, just another quick plug. Obviously, when your property tax bill comes, your favorite day, I'm sure, of the year, please consider making a contribution to the students. You can also make an additional contribution by checking at any time to the mayor's office and make it out to the City of Revere Community Scholarship Fund. And those are welcome anytime here at City Hall via the mayor's office. Thank you for your consideration.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Council President Visconti that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to the Revere Chamber of Commerce.
You know, as a small business owner, I'm very appreciative for organizations such as the Revere Chamber of Commerce. I was reminded how critical a role they actually play in our community a couple of weeks back when I attended their ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new location on Broadway. The Revere Chamber of Commerce does tremendous work in our community. The group of board members donate their time and talents to promote economic progress for our local businesses, you know? And these businesses are a lifeline to the communities as well as our residents. And it's a vital, it's vital that we continue to support the local businesses and do all that we can to ensure they are successful. And the Revere Chamber of Commerce is a big part of that success. I want to thank Executive Director Amanda Potillo, as well as President Patrick Losferrato, as well as all the board members for their positivity, their energy, and their hard work that has gone into revitalizing the Revere Chamber of Commerce, and for the tremendous work that lies ahead. And on behalf of the Revere City Council, I would like to present this certificate of appreciation. So if you guys can come on up. And you know what? We might as well, we can do it as a whole. Yeah. Oh, that's not the one.
Fumble.
Fumble. That's Skylar's. You got to give that to, yeah. So if you guys can come up, I'd like to read the certificate. Congratulations. All right? Congratulations. The City of Revere Certificate of Appreciation in acknowledgment of promoting economic progress and quality of life in the City of Revere by making a commitment to providing its members with valuable resources, programs, networking events, and promotional and educational opportunities to help the Revere business community thrive. Special recognition is hereby accorded to the Revere Chamber of Commerce, established 1979. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the sixth day of June in the year of our Lord 2022, and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 245th. Signed by Ashley Melnick, Clerk, and Jerry Visconti, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
This way?
Yeah, we can have the whole, the whole council come, it's okay.
I don't know how this works.
All right, well, hi, everyone. My name's Amanda Portio. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the Executive Director of the Revere Chamber of Commerce. I didn't have anything formally written down today, but of course, thank you so much for this great honor. I took this position in late August of last year. I think we can all agree, for those that have known the chamber, it certainly didn't live up to its expectations over the past several years. And one of the things that I focused on the most was to show the community its value, because I think that that really was lost over the past few years. So receiving an honor like this, although it may not seem like it's a big deal, it's just confirmation that we're on the right track. We definitely have a ways to go, but we're very proud of the progress that we've made, not just with the chamber, but really directly with the businesses that have returned to us or joined the chamber for the very first time. So I'm very fortunate that I have a wonderful Board of Directors who, again, they're not paid. They're doing this out of the goodness of their heart, because they believe in the mission of the chamber, and they want to see Revere businesses succeed. We have a couple ladies tonight, and of course, Pat Losferrato, our new president. So thank you again. And again, this is just confirmation for us to keep doing what we're doing, and the future is very bright. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number five, hearing called disordered on a loan order in the amount of $1.2 million for Phase 14 Investigations, Mass DEPCY, calendar year 2022, CWSRF Planning Project Number 7123.
This is a public hearing, so we're going to start off with proponents.
Good evening, Council. Rich Fiske, CFO, Twitter on Broadway. I am a proponent for this loan. As you know, historically, we've used the State Revolving Fund Loan Program to fund repairs to our infrastructure due to the consent decree order. This loan program is a low-interest 30-year loan program that this year, we believe we will be getting some relief of principal through American Rescue Plan Act that is being funneled in to the program from the federal government. So I'm here to speak in favor of that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. City councilors. Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Fiske, and I do recognize we have some, some people that are here from CDM Smith. A few, few weeks ago, I expressed just some curiosity in regards to the 10-year consent decree and where we stand. So I guess with a few loan orders in front of us this evening, it might be, you know, and some representation from CDM Smith, it could be a good opportunity to potentially update us on that 10-year timeline, where we're coming up, I think, on year nine, and are we on path to get to the 10 years, get out of the decree, so that we can just go back to restoring normal year-to-year water systems?
Counsel, I think I'll defer that question to John Doherty from CDM to give you some input.
Apologies, I think I called you Mr. Button. My apologies.
My name's John Doherty. John Doherty, 28 Clock Road, Linfield, Mass. I'm a senior project manager with CDM Smith, and I've been working with the city for the last dozen or so years on this consent decree. And so specifically to your question, the consent decree, the city entered into it in, I think it was 2009 or 10 it started. There was an end date of the end of 2022, this coming December. Since the beginning of the consent decree, we have been working with the city to get the city better terms under the consent decree, because the hard deadline of 2022, we all felt was unreasonable. In 2013 or 14, we proposed a schedule that gave the city more time to complete all the required improvements that the government wanted them to make. And while the EPA and the Department of Justice accepted those, that schedule, they never officially changed the terms, you know, the end deadline of the consent decree. So the city has made tremendous progress over a dozen years' worth of improvements. Now, there's very limited SSOs, there's sanitary sewer overflows, there's, you know, there's better operation of the sanitary sewer system. The EPA, the DEP, the Department of Justice are all thrilled and have praised the city and city government for all the progress they've been made. Recently, the staff from the mayor's office, Director of Finance, City Engineer, Chief of Infrastructure have all met with DEP and EPA staff, and we expect the end of this year that the consent decree terms will be adjusted. So it will not be the end of the consent decree, it's just that the government will formally agree to let the city continue to make improvements on a more reasonable schedule. And so this current funding, these loan orders that are in front of the council tonight, are associated with the city continuing to do work in a more reasonable fashion and not being under such a limited timeline as when the consent decree was initially entered into.
I appreciate that. And I think, you know, certainly all due respect, and I think that, you know, you spoke very well to that, but, you know, it doesn't really answer the question when I'm asking, you know, we, you've consulted with us, and you've done a very nice job. I'm not necessarily sure I know all of the work that you do, it's not my area of expertise, but ultimately, you've, you've been the consulting firm for a dozen years almost, and, you know, the decree was supposed to be about 10 years. I've been on the council seven, many of the members here have been on a little bit longer. You know, we, we pretty much approve every loan order that's requested. So we've done our part. The city, I think, from a financial standpoint, has provided the resources, the work's being done. Why, when we put this plan in play for a 10-year proposal, we're coming up on that 10-year, are we not at least getting to the finish line of saying, all right, this is off your back, now continue, now go about your normal business of maintaining your infrastructure? And I say that because to the, to the layman, to the, to the average person watching from home, they want to see, and you know this, they want to see the rates reduced. They don't want to have to see these large loan orders come every year, because it does affect what they're paying for their water rate. And ultimately, you know, it's a 10-year contract, a 10-year deal, we've done our job, everyone supposedly, the experts have done their job. Why, why wouldn't it be reasonable to think, to get that at least removed and then continue the average work?
So I would agree with what you're, I would agree with some of what you're saying. When the city, when the government threatened to sue the city, and they wanted the city to enter into a consent decree, at that time, the city, for the previous two decades, had not done a tremendous amount of work. When the consent decree was being pushed upon the city, our position was that the city shouldn't be held to a 10-year, or 12-year, or 15-year program, because there wasn't enough information to understand what the city really needed to do to meet the requirements of the law. So when we were initially working with the city and working with all the attorneys and arguing the point, we had asked them to delay even implementing the consent decree. The Department of Justice refused, EPA refused, they forced the city's hand, and they basically threatened the city that they would take them to federal court and tremendous fines and so on, and that if they didn't agree to sign the consent decree with what we considered to be an unreasonable deadline of 2022, that, you know, that if you didn't sign the consent decree, you were being dragged off to court. So city government at that time decided that they didn't, they weren't in a good position with, you know, with respect to how much work had been done over the previous two decades or so. They agreed to a consent decree that said, end is 2022. Consider that, I considered that an artificial date, but the city agreed to it. So with that going forward, we started developing plans, we looked at what really needed to be done, and in 2013, we presented a plan to the government that said, the city needs 25 or 30 years to do this, that a reasonable timeframe is, is 20, 35, and that would let the city, the cities do work at a more reasonable rate and not spend excessive amounts of money in 10- or 12-year period. So the government accepted that schedule, and there's all paperwork on this and so on, but the government accepted that schedule, but they never officially went back to the court to adjust the date. So that is where we are now, is that, is that the attorney is working with the city, will go back and adjust the date and timeline of the consent decree. The government will expect that the city will continue to do work for the next 15 or so years to make, but you'll be doing it at a rate that's more reasonable to what the city can afford. So, you know, my, my honest, you know, my honest opinion on this was the 2022 deadline was not something that I considered reasonable at the time, but the lawyers and the government forced the city's hand, and, you know, so some people may be aware of some of this, but it's all documented, there's reports every year and so on.
Well, I appreciate your candor, and, you know, certainly don't want to be disrespectful this evening, and again, it's not directed towards you or anyone in particular, but I think from a further standpoint, you know, the city, city council needs to get a little bit more involved on what that looks like over the next couple of years, certainly over the next few months.
I would, I would agree.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. John, thanks for being here. So, so, but just to get back, because as you know, we worked very closely on this for several years.
Yes.
And what I'm confused about, and if my memory is serving me correctly, and as you just alluded to, the DEP and the EPA both, I think, recognized that these, that the terms of the consent decree were just too stringent.
Yep.
And, but then they didn't act on it, like, like, can you explain that?
No, I, I can't, Mr. Rizzo, I, I do, you know, I know, I know how I felt. I know at the day, at the times that the consent decree was being negotiated, I was, as an engineering professional, I had an opinion about that they shouldn't be able to force the city's hand and force the city to do this, but the mayor at the time and the lawyers and all said, if you don't agree to some deadline, you're going to go to court. And I think they weighed, you know, people who are, had more responsibility than I did at the time, weighed the cost of going to court and being subject to fines, given the condition that the, the sanitary sewer infrastructure was in the city back in 2009, 2010. So based on that, the feeling was that if the city was dragged to federal court, a federal judge might agree with the government, fine the city million, you know, tens of millions of dollars, and you would still have to do everything regardless. So at that time, they decided to enter a consent decree. One of the first things we did on the consent decree was, over the first couple of years, looked at everything that would be required, developed a schedule, developed reports, presented that back, fought with the EPA and the DEP for a bit, and following those battles, they agreed that the city, that the 2022 date was not reasonable, and that there would be an extension of time, and that the government would work with the city and allow you to proceed on a reasonable schedule. So that's where we are now. So the, the funding that's being requested tonight is just consistent with the schedule that's been laid out and the improvements that are being made. So from EPA, DEP, DOJ's point of view, the city's doing a great job. The O and M is great, there's more city staff, the city, you know, rarely There's more city staff. The city, you know, rarely has sanitary sewer overflows compared to 10 or 15 years ago. But the government, when they get you in a consent decree, they're generally not in a hurry to let you out of the consent decree. And, and so the city solicitor's office involved, we have, you know, outside attorneys who are involved in all this. And, you know, so that's the history. And I know, Counselor Rizzo, you became mayor right after the consent decree was signed.
Right.
And, you know, and we've, we've done, you know, everything in our power to force DEP and EPA's hand, and they've come around to being less critical of the city and cooperative with the city somewhat. But, you know, the, the end date, so to speak, of being done with the consent decree was never, you know, in my, my opinion, was never gonna be 2022. That was an artificial deadline that was imposed that the city accepted, and we've been working for the last, you know, five, six, seven years to get that moved so that the city is not out of compliance with their agreement with the government.
Right. If I, and I totally, I totally understand everything that you said, John. And, you know, I mean, obviously, I think we're all in agreement that a 10-year timeline to make up for 100 years of neglect just doesn't make any sense. I mean, you feasibly, you couldn't feasibly do it. You'd have every street in the city dug up and we'd be at a gridlock. So, you know, I, it just, you know, this is just a little bit of venting, but I mean, to have bureaucrats come down and tell us, and basically, not just tell us, not the city council, not you, they're telling the ratepayers out there, I don't care what it's gonna cost you, you better fix it. That just, that never made sense to me. It still doesn't make sense to me. But we're making progress. In the big picture, it's kind of like the cleanup of Boston Harbor. It, you know, nobody wants to pay MWRA, but we would have turned into Bangladesh if we didn't. So it's cleaned it up. We, people don't like to have sewage backing up into their homes, and we want to make sure that we, that we have, you know, a good, solid water, water and sewer system. So it has to be done. It's the timeline that's always been a bone of contention. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a different question, but it's, it's on the same line. Currently, you're down on the lower half of Beauchamp, and you've finished the project, put it laying down new piping. You're doing beautiful work with the sidewalks. You're gonna pave it. But in that whole pot, I think there's six streets. There were five trees planted. That's it. And I talked to city engineer, John Vioto, and he told me that there is money left over in that project. So I'm wondering, either we can extend the sidewalk to the end of the street, or we can put some trees there because it's a concrete part of the city, and it doesn't look good. I don't know why trees weren't involved in the whole project when you've put sidewalks in. But if we, if I could have a conversation with you, because there is money left over, I would like to put trees down there because we really need trees in Beauchamp because of the plains, or we can extend the sidewalk all the way down to the corner. They stopped and they didn't extend it. So maybe I could get your number and we could talk about it.
Counselor, I have, I have your contact information. So I will, with the city engineer, I will reach out to you. Just as a general point, the, a lot of these projects are sewer infrastructure. So when we can, we try to include the sidewalks and repaving and stuff. But the, the funding agency, the DEP, has certain rules about what types of improvements are eligible under these wastewater programs. So there are times when we can improve the drainage system as well as the sewer system. There's times if we beat up the sidewalks enough, I have to dig them up, we can add that kind of work to it. But in the, you know, I'm happy to reach out to you tomorrow and, and get together with Nick Reistrum and figure out exactly what you're talking about and see what we can do.
That would be wonderful. And I just want to say you did a great job on the sidewalks, and I hope you do a great job on the paving of the streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Maravito.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. I have a question. Have there been any complications or any, are there any anticipated issues with the ongoing project?
No, there, I mean, we have, so not, not anything unusual.
That's gonna slow it down.
There's not anything unusual. We've been, we've actually, over the last, so if you're talking about like overall last 10, 12 years?
No, just within the last time that you spoke before us.
Okay. No, we're, we're making progress. COVID did slow things down a little bit in terms of, of some efforts. In general, up until this point, I think things have changed now, but up until this point, the city had received very good bid prices. So we've actually, over the course of the last 10 years, the city's probably spent a little less money than was anticipated. So the construction market was pretty good. That seems to be turning with supply chain issues and all. But, but no, the project's been going very well. And, and again, we work very closely with Don Caramella and Nick Reistrum and, you know, and city staff, and they direct us on what to do and what are the appropriate projects. And the DEP has to bless all the jobs.
So COVID is the only circumstance that probably slowed down the project? How much of a lag do you think it slowed down?
COVID slowed things down a little bit about dealing with, there are some cases where we have to deal with private homeowners on things and to see what's, you know, to take care of some pumps or illegal drain connections, those types of things. And some of that work was slowed down because neither the city nor us nor the homeowner wanted, you know, interaction with people.
So overall, would you say it prolonged the project months, a year?
No, no, we're, the city is on schedule. The city is actually a little ahead of the schedule that was promoted seven or eight years ago. So we've, you know, we actually were able to prove to the government that the city is, is doing everything in their power to make improvements. And on our timeline of what we thought was a reasonable schedule for the city to do work, we're a little bit ahead of that schedule.
Thank you.
So with that being said, you're looking, if I heard you correctly, pushing this off approximately an additional 10 to 15 years? Is that, is that my understanding?
Yeah, that's correct. What we would like to do is to have the government agree that the city has made tremendous progress and that the deadline of which the government forces you to do things is extended out to 20, 30, 5, plus or minus a few years. We don't want to have them say, okay, 20, 30, eight more years, you have to be done. Because if you're not done, you don't meet their expectations, you're subject to fines and stuff. So we want them to give you a reasonable amount of time to finish. Giving you a longer window of time means you potentially get to spend a little bit less money each year while you're making progress. It also gives you opportunities to see whether or not the MWRA system changes the way they run, because the city of Rubia connects to Chelsea, connects to the MWRA system. So we're hoping to see an extension of 13 to 15 years from the current deadline. And that would just put the city in a better position. But it would also, it would mean that the government acknowledges the substantial progress the city has made.
So building a few years of cushion into those, into that timeline is going to be beneficial to the city?
Correct.
To your expertise, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Counselor Maravito.
Thank you. One more question. Thanks for the leave. So if you, if, if we're ahead of project, ahead of time on the project, why do you feel it is necessary to give us, that we need more time? If, if everything we're doing is ahead of time, what is your reason? What could be the potential issue that we would need more time?
Well, there's a legal deadline of 2022, the, end of this year. There's a legal deadline that if the, if, if legally and in court, the schedule isn't adjusted and extended, then come the end of December, the city's no longer in compliance. So that's one hurdle we want to pass. And then the, you know, then there's nothing saying that things will go as smoothly the next 10 years as they have the last 11 or 12. So I'm just being cautious. And, you know, the best, the more time you can get, the better it is for the city. It allows the city more flexibility. But the, the real issue is, there is a hard deadline that was agreed to 12 or 13 years ago, and that comes at the end of this year, and that needs to be resolved. And I can't resolve it, the city can't resolve it. It needs to go to a federal judge who will listen to everybody and say, okay, I agree. And, and what we're trying to do is create a situation where the attorneys for the city, the DEP, the EPA, they all go to the judge in unison and say, city's done a great job. We agree they need more time. And I don't think we'll ever get anybody to say that 2022 was unreasonable, but we want everybody to come in and say, the city's doing great. They need more time. Extend this, move it out. And, you know, treat it as a, a good thing, as a successful story, as opposed to you weren't done in 2022.
So originally, the, the date is set by the court?
Correct.
So why would they give us a timeline that wasn't, that is not sufficient when we need an additional 10, 15 years in addition for cushion?
I, you know, it's, I'm not on the enforcement side of the world. I, I just think it was one of those things where EPA felt or felt that if they gave, if they didn't give you a hard deadline or something they could hold you to, that maybe you wouldn't do stuff as fast. I, you know, I, my opinion was 2022 was unreasonable. But again, that was my opinion. And I think the, I think the enforcement agency at the time was saying, we want to force them to live with this deadline and do work and see progress. And I, I can't, I can't answer the question.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem logical to give a timeline of 10 years when it's an actual 25-year project. I could see, okay, let's, let's decrease the amount of time if it's a 15-year project and let's say 10 years. But to underestimate by 20, 15 years, it's a little, it's not logical. But I know, I know it's not on you, but.
No, no, it's okay. You sound, you sound like me at the time of the signing of the consent decree.
You're welcome. And I'm gonna end on just one note. You said that we're ahead of schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And I can only hope that I speak with Donnie Caramella and, you know, Nick Reistrum, who will confirm that as well. I take it, you know, I mean, what's that, where, where is that in the, where can we get that confirmation that we're actually ahead of schedule?
So there, there is, there's documents that were laid out seven, eight years ago where we had a project list of how we would rehabilitate the sewer system and do certain projects and, and do certain work in areas of the city. And so on that schedule, we're about a year, year and a half ahead of where we said we would be. So it's just, it's a matter of like, we said we'd be done with this much by now, and we're really a little bit ahead. So.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It's simply on a long bar chat schedule that was developed and put out in about 2013.
I understand. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Any further questions from the council? Hearing and seeing none. I believe, if it's okay, I'd like to take a roll call on this. Now, I think we're gonna need two roll calls on this. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $1.2 million for Phase IV investigations, CWSRF planning project number 7123? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. And with these CWSRF loans, there's corresponding resolution for each of the loans, okay? On the resolution, Counselor for CWSRF planning project number 7123, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Counselor item number six, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $12 million for Phase 13 construction, CWSRF construction project number 7099.
This being a public hearing, proponents?
Good evening, Counselor Rich Vizkay, CFO, 221 Broadway. I am here to speak in favor of the $12 million loan order. You just heard from John Dougherty about the background of the consent decree. And you may recall, we just rescinded over $10 million worth of debt that was issued, but not, I mean, it was authorized but not issued by the council. So we rescinded that $10 million, and now we're before you asking for $12 million with the hopes that we can receive some substantial principal forgiveness through the American Rescue Plan Act, APA, as we call it. And I believe we're entitled to 6% principal forgiveness, just as a matter of the program, which is about $700,000. So with those two things being considered, I recommend favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Counselors? Any, any comments? Okay, hearing and seeing no comments, we'll take a roll call for that.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $12 million for Phase III construction, CWSRF construction project number 7099? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, that loan order has been approved. Now, on the resolution for CWSRF construction project number 7099, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Counselor item number seven, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $500,000 for MWRA infiltration and inflow removal projects.
This being a public hearing, we're gonna start off with proponents. Anybody in favor?
Richard Vizkay, CFO, 221 Broadway. This is another lending opportunity offered through the MWRA program for inflow INI. And we are authorized to borrow a certain amount through that program. And we're just here to seek approval to borrow $500,000 to continue on with the efforts on the consent decree.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Counselors? No comments? We'll take a roll call.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $500,000 for MWRA infiltration and inflow removal projects? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Moravito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, that loan order has been approved. Onto communications. Calendar item number eight, communication from the city auditor relative to the fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation order.
Good evening, Counselor Rich Vizkay, CFO, 221 Broadway. Before you, you will find a summary of the appropriation order for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Most of you have received your budgets either today or over the weekend. We will have a series of budget hearings over the next two weeks to discuss the details of this. But this, before you, is just the loan order that will be ultimately voted on as presented or as modified by the council. And I'm happy to answer any questions on, on that order. Thank you.
This is gonna be going to Ways and Means, but if there are any comments from the council now? Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Vizkay for his hard work on presenting the budget to us, getting it to us, you know, in the first week of June. And I'm looking forward to the next couple of weeks. And I was glad to get it over the weekend and start going through it. So I will be texting you, I'm sure, as I continue to go through it. So I will be texting you, I'm sure, as I continue to go through it. But thank you for your hard work and due diligence in getting it to us.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you, my pleasure. And any councils that have any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime and I'll be sure to get back to you and try to follow up.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Rich. I just would like, I really appreciate that the pages are numbered. Because I know there was a time that I was on this council that the pages weren't numbered, so.
That was before my time, but I'm happy to number them for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. This is going to Ways and Means.
Calendar Item Number Nine, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2, Departmental Revolving Funds Spending Authorization for FY23.
Imagine we'll just stay up here for a little while.
Podium jaws.
Thank you. So as most of you may know, but some of the newer councils may not, we have many departmental revolving funds that are authorized by the council and have been ordained as modifications to Massachusetts General Law as required. So these revolving funds for the departments are ordained, but we are required to come before you each year to send a maximum not to exceed expenditure amounts. If you're not familiar, we're not allowed to spend any money that's not there, but we cannot exceed the amount that's authorized. So we're required to come before you each year to set that maximum threshold. And I did also put a summary of the last nine months of those revolving funds with the beginning balance revenues and expenditures and account rent balance as of third quarter, ending March 31st. So if anyone has any questions, any of the particular funds or the spending authorizations, I'm here to answer those questions. Thank you.
Any comments? I can just, if there's no comments from the, my colleagues, I'll just make one notion. And, you know, looking at, and this is going to go into Ways and Means as well, so I'm not going to go too much into it. But I did notice, looking at the previous year's maximum amounts, some of those accounts have increased quite a bit. And, I mean, we can get into the details of that, but just an overall understanding of, of the, the amount of increase is, is, is the question.
I mean, we try to err on the side of caution because those limits are just spending limits. And because if the money's not there, you can't spend it anyway. So instead of coming back before you during the year to try to get increases in those, we try to, we try to set the limits high enough so that we know that we'll get through the year. Because sometimes those accounts may have a lot of activity, certain like accounts, like the 40U account or the Recreation Revolving Account. You never really know.
We named a couple.
Some of the bigger ones, I mean, you probably picked up on that. But we, we don't have any accurate way of predicting the future of those. And, and you'll see, we actually have three new revolving accounts that'll be before you probably in a few minutes that we're adding on as well, the Aquatics Program being one of them through the rec. But we just try to set reasonable maximum not to exceed amounts that will save us another trip before the council. And like I said, we can't spend them if they go in deficit. So they shut down if there's no money in them, so.
Thank you. Let it be known, we like to see you up here, so. But that being said, it's going into Ways and Means.
Calendar Item Number 10, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2, Departmental Revolving Funds Ordinances.
Like I just previously mentioned, we do have three new revolving funds that we are looking to modify the ordinances. One of them is the Aquatics Program that will be taken over by Apaches and Recreation. That's the Garfield Pool. Again, in order to operate that operation, we collect revenues from programs that are run at that pool. And those dollars are meant to pay the staff and the lifeguards, et cetera, for, for that operation. A second revolving fund that we're looking to set up would be for the EV charging stations that you see in throughout the city. We started off with a few, they're getting more and more popular. We have been offering those free of charge to people to use to charge their cars. However, as they become more popular and we gain more of them, we did find out that a couple got vandalized. We don't really have a funding source to fix those as of yet. So we are thinking of setting up a program where we can collect some small revenues for those electronic vehicles that charge at them and then put that in a revolving fund to maintain and perhaps expand upon the equipment. And the last one is the Trash Barrels and Recycled Barrels Revolving Fund. We have satisfied our three-year debt service on the purchase of those barrels. So we want to maintain an inventory. And if people want a second barrel, if they needed a recycle barrel, we want to just set up a revolving fund so that the dollars that are collected for those receptacles will just go back into purchasing more and keeping an inventory on hand. So those are the three new revolving funds at the department level we're looking to establish. And I'm happy to talk more about it at the, at the hearing.
This is going to get referred to a public hearing on June 27th.
Calendar Item Number 11, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to the Water and Sewer Rates for FY23.
All right. Before you, we have a memo discussing the water and sewer rates. You had just heard a lot about the consent decree, a lot about the MWRA. It is unfortunate news, but reality that our assessments for both water and sewer at the MWRA have increased over $1 million each. Our debt service has increased half a million dollars. So we have $2.5 million worth of fixed cost increases in our budget along with our normal operating costs for salaries and expenses. So we were really looking at what could be upwards of a 17% water and sewer increase to keep that as a self-supporting operation. Revenues in, paying for expenses out. And we all know that that's terrible news. So after strategizing and talking to the mayor and, and some of the people in the Water and Sewer Department, we are before you to present a plan to try to stabilize the rates over the next three years. And that would be using some of our American Rescue Plan Act to the $203 million over three years to help to stabilize these rates with a not to exceed amount over the next three years of 4.25%, which is the natural growth of, of the department without that spike from the fixed cost. So it's hard to forecast exactly where we're going to be in three years. Our 2023 rates also are using $1 million of our stabilization account and also $900,000 of our certified retained earnings from the department revenue. So long story short, it's going to take us $3.4 million in fiscal year 2023 to allow us to keep our rates at 4.25%. And what we're proposing is to have the council consider adopting a three-year rate structure so that we can apply some of our APA funds and try to keep that rate stable over the next three years. I don't think anyone's thrilled with that plan, but we're here before you to kind of explain that these unfunded mandates from the consent decree and the debt service charges for all the work that comes along with it, leaves us with no choice but to come up with a plan that we think is, is best we could put together for the ratepayers and the community. So I'm here to answer any questions on, on the theory and, and take the beating or whatever we've got to do here. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Counsel Keith?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the City Auditor. This is, this isn't being approved tonight.
No, this is going to go to Ways and Means.
Because I did have a, a number of questions, but I, I prefer to take it into the Ways and Means. That'd be great, thank you.
We can beat them up on it.
I'd love to beat them up.
Ways and Means, how's that?
Thank you.
Ways and Means.
Calendar Item Number 12, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to an Appropriation from Free Cash to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yes, this is just a new ordinance that was adopted by the council. And with that ordinance, there was a commitment of 10% of the certified free cash to be deposited into that. Should have been brought forward when we did those capital improvement stabilization-type transfers. But this being a new ordinance, it was, it was related to me that we forgot to do that perfunctory transfer into the trust fund. And I did attach a copy of the ordinance for your benefit. But 10% of certified free cash is what we're proposing. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
One quick question.
Counsel Rizzo?
One quick question, Mr. President. I, I'm just curious and, you know, I, I'm not intimately familiar with the ordinance. But when funds are expended, who's expending the funds? Is it through planning and development? Is it through, I mean, and what type of expenditures do you anticipate being made from this particular account? Can you give us just an example of what?
Much like you, Counsel Rizzo, I'm not totally intimate with this ordinance either. It's definitely driven through the planning, community development, and the mayor's office. I do know that Affordable Housing Trust is meant to help promote affordable housing. But the manner by which that, that body is, is put together and what their criteria is, whether it be soft second mortgages, whether it be assisted with down payments or rehab loans, I'm not, I'm not totally familiar, to be honest. But I'm, I'm happy to go try to find the right person to give you more details on that.
Okay, I mean, if it, it's an ordinance, you know, we're pretty much, if we're committed to put 10% into it, we're going to presumably put the 10% in. I'm just more curious, we're, we're putting aside these funds coming from free cash. It's going into a fund, but I, you know, just really don't know who would qualify to access these funds? Who would this go to? Who would be benefiting from it? I guess is my question. But we can discuss that down the road. I know we've got other things to discuss, so.
Yeah, I do know we started it with $100,000 deposit when it was first established. And this is the first free cash appropriation into it. And I do know that we haven't spent any money out of it. So I believe that body, that whether it's a committee, is being put together. And I imagine that they will put together some of the guidelines and principles by which it's administered. But I will follow up with you on some of that information.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No other questions? We'll take a, a roll call.
In accordance with Section 2.90.052 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $157,355 from Free Cash to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar Item Number 13, Communication from the City Auditor Relative to the Acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 13E, to Establish a School District Reserve Fund.
This, this is a new law that was brought on through the Municipal Modernization Act that allows cities and towns to establish a fund to deposit reimbursements and other funds that come in from special education, tuition, out-of-district, special education transportation and such, so that there is a clear mechanism to receive those reimbursements from the state and then spend them back without appropriation for, for the allowable items as, as indicated in the law. So right now, what's happening is that there is new legislation in 2022, and they're extending it to 2023, that through the circuit break, cities and towns are being reimbursed up to 75% of eligible special education transportation charges, some homelessness transportation charges, which were otherwise unfunded mandates. So the legislature has stepped up their game and, and started to reimburse cities and towns for these costs. Now, what you see during the budget season is that our transportation budget for the schools has increased almost $2.5 million, which was alarming to both the schools and the city. For those who don't know, even though it's a school charge, it's not eligible education expense, so it's above and beyond net school spending. So basically, the city, city side of the budget has to pick up these costs. And they're flushed through the Schedule 19, which is the offset of the eligible expenses and charges that are between the school and the city. So we basically were looking at a $1 million budget gap to try to close that. We met with Diane Kelly and Matt Cruz from the School Department, and they have agreed to use $1 million of their ESER money to close that $1 million gap. But during those conversations, it was decided that instead of taking reimbursements into expense lines, which is not really good accounting practice, we would set up the revolving fund to have a little bit better transparency, but also have that mechanism of receiving these reimbursements and then applying them in the future years. So in fiscal year 23, we've netted those reimbursements, anticipated reimbursements out of the '23 budget. However, when we get reimbursements from '23, which will be for '24 and '25, we're trying to create a, a, a clear path of how those reimbursements are received and then how they're put back into the respective transportation costs. So maybe it's a little complicated, but really, it's just, it's just another revolving fund that we can establish through the laws provided. But it also gives the City Council and the School Committee better access and better vision on how those dollars are regenerated through the budget.
Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I just have a couple of questions, you know, just reading through the document. The kids were out of school for quite a while, right? So I would imagine, what happened with those transportation costs while the kids weren't going to school?
I'll tell you how I understand it, but I would, I'd probably defer to Dr. Kelly and Matt Cruz on exactly. But during the pandemic, there were brokered deals made between transportation departments to not totally shut them off and pay them nothing. Because if that pandemic then cleared up, we would have no ability to get those children bused. So there was some savings realized. And those savings are what they're using this year to pay for the overruns. Because essentially, they'd be $2.5 million out of balance this year. So as was explained to me, the savings from the year where there was no transportation, they're using to take care of the fiscal year '22 transportation issues with the staffing and the gas prices. And, and that's kind of what led to fiscal year '23 because our budgeted number for '22 is much lower than what's actually going to be spent there. So I believe the savings from '21 are being applied to '22, which leaves us with the, the problem in '23 as we see it.
Well, it just, it just seems, through you, Mr. President, it just seems that, you know, there should have been a significant step. I mean, starting with the fact, the city got $30 million in APA funding, didn't we, the city?
We got $30 million, and they, they got about $27 million at the schools as well, so.
Okay, so the city got 30, the School Department got 27. Yeah, I, it's, it's a little mind-boggling, the money that's being spent. It's, I, I can't really, I can't really get my head around it. I mean, we're talking about numbers here like, you know, we got, we got the consent decree, and now we got a 4.5% water and sewer increase, and now increase in transportation costs. And, you know, I mean, at what point do we talk about maybe potential cutting some expenses? You know, I think we need to start looking at this. We can't, I mean, if the city's getting, I mean, like you just alluded to, close to $60 million. I mean, didn't these drivers go out on unemployment? I mean, why are we picking it up? Didn't the companies, the private companies that are doing the busing, didn't they qualify for PPP money like any other business out there that, that like needed help? I mean, why is it the taxpayers taking it on the chin, having to pay the companies for not driving the kids to school? It doesn't make any sense to me. I, you know, but, you know, we'll get into a lot of these conversations during the budget and all that, but it's just, I mean, sitting here tonight, it's like, you know, I, I feel like I'm glazing over all these numbers we're going through about, you know, increase here, increase there, you know, extra spending here. I mean, at the end of the day, none of us city councillors, I mean, we do on an individual basis as taxpayers, but the people out there are the ones that got to pay all this. I mean, we need to start to really think about what's going on. Then you factor in everything else. Take the City of Revere out of it, just what's going on with the economy? I mean, it's, it's getting a little bit, not a little bit, it's getting a... I mean, it's, it's getting a little bit, not a little bit, it's getting a lot concerning. And I know this isn't at you, Rich, this isn't, this is, wait, this is not aimed at you.
Your concerns are my concerns, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, uh, you know, I just think we need to start to really take a deep look at what we're paying for, what we're getting. I mean, and, uh, you know, um, we'll get into that during the budget discussions, but I just needed to say that, Mr. President.
And just to answer, well, just to answer your question, I think those questions are great questions to ask the schools when they come before you for the budget, because I can't speak too much detail of, of those questions. I've, I've gotten some answers, but, um, long story short, the purpose of this law being adopted is to help us kind of keep a better eye on at least that particular part of it, but I, 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 like you, believe that we have to take a, I mean, the, the transportation budget's almost $10 million right now. And, and like I told the school committee, I went before the school committee, and I told them, your rival in my police department, my, my, my fire department with these costs, and, and I don't know that there's any great answers, but it certainly needs some kind of, uh, uh, committee to look at what, what exactly we're doing with regard to regular day transportation, special education transportation. Some of these are unfunded mandates, some of these are logistical issues, some of them have to do with the gas prices, the labor shortage, yada, yada. You can hear all the excuses, but long story short, we're left with it in our lap, and, and your concerns are my concerns as well.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Vizcay, when you come in front of us with this many communications, you should probably be more strategic, strategic about them, um, because it does seem like we're just, you know, approval after approval, uh, with big, big numbers, but this, this one piece, you know, it's sandwiched in between, the way I was reading it, it will be more of a cost benefit to us, even though, you know, keeping separate that the school transportation budget is, it's, it's in tough shape. You know, I, I was doing some math, and I think I read, I was thinking, I was doing some numbers, I think it would be better to give a parent $100 a day to take their kid to school than to stick them on a bus, if I was doing the math right. And I go, this might be exaggerated, but the, the transportation costs have, have become alarming. So this here is giving us the ability, now just, the ability to get some money back from the state and from the federal government for that expense, correct?
Well, we get it back anyway, what it's, what it's gonna allow is for it to be put in a specific fund and used for a specific purpose, because now, it's, this doesn't happen in a Revere, but we vote a bottom-line budget to the schools, so if there's a reimbursement that comes back, it may go into the transportation budget, it may not. Uh, it does in our case, but this will make sure that there's some belts and suspenders on it.
So this gives you and the city a little bit more, um, a little bit more control on that.
Yeah, and it's a better accounting practice, because, uh, you're not supposed to put revenues against expense lines, it kind of, um, corrupts the, uh, the integrity of the ledger, so don't want to bore you with the accounting stuff, but.
Thank you.
And, and this, just to be clear, this law also has to be passed by the school committee, so it's, 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 like I said, it's an expense that's borne by the city, but managed by the school, and that's where it becomes difficult on, you know, how do we manage it better, because we're not really managing it, it's really managed on the school side, but funded by the city side.
Right. Well, overall, I felt like this was probably more of a benefit, and I, and I, and I agree with Counselor Rizzo suggesting, you know, the, 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 the numbers that are coming in front of us this evening, and certainly in a couple more weeks with the budgets, or next week with the budgets, but, uh, we definitely gotta get our arms around the transportation piece, because it's, it's overwhelming.
It was definitely one of the bigger budget items we had to share. Again, some of these things just sneak up on you, it, it's, it's very gradual, 2%, 3% every year, and then it was 50% increase, and, and, and the number that you'll see is down a million dollars from when we started, so there's been work done on reducing that budget, but, um, I don't have all the answers to those particular strategies on school transportation, I'd leave that to the school department.
It'll, it'll also give us a better indication of actually how much reimbursement we're getting, right?
Yeah, the, the reimbursement of special education, out-of-district transportation is new, it was never reimbursed.
Yeah.
So it was an unfunded mandate, then they started doing 25%, now they're up to 75% of eligible costs, not entire costs, but again, I'm not an expert on the school laws, I tend to be more towards the city side, but I think what this does is just spread some sunshine on, on what's going on, and hopefully we can get a, a plan to keep those costs in control.
We'll refer this to Ways and Means as well. Um, oh, uh, okay. Is there any objection of making a roll call on this? No? Hearing and seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Shall the City Council accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 13E, relative to the establishment of a school district reserve fund? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo. Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti.
Yes.
Yes, the MGL has been accepted. Calendar item number 14, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY23 capital budget appropriations.
Thank you. Um, I did, uh, distribute out numbered capital improvement plans for those who received their budget over the weekend, they may have noticed the capital budget didn't have numbers, so if you want to know why, it had a package in front of you, it was a cover sheet, a table of contents, and a new, um, capital improvement budget with numbered pages. For those who received it tonight, the pages are numbered in there. Uh, these appropriation requests are the pay-as-you-go, and I do apologize, the first figure that I have is 55,000, was supposed to read 80,000. It doesn't change the amount authorized, uh, that we propose authorized for funding that, but that 55,000, um, for vehicle, for transportation is, is 80,000. But, um, happy to speak on any of these items, um, with regard to pay-as-you-go, we do have a couple of different funding sources, capital improvement stabilization account, the free cash, uh, certified, as well as water-saw retained earnings for some, uh, drainage work for the water and saw department. So happy to answer any questions on those, um, appropriation requests, thank you.
Um, I believe we're gonna send this to Ways and Means as well, but if any councilors have any questions, hearing and seeing none, Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the city auditor relative to FY23 capital budget appropriations from the Community Improvement Trust Fund.
This is, uh, just a separate order that I thought would be appropriate, uh, due to the funding source of the Community Investment Trust account. As you can see, there's two, um, items, uh, relative to planning, community development for, uh, matching funds required for park grants of Costa Park, Gibson Park, and Harmon Park. Just to be clear, the 80,000 will cover the matching funds for all three of those projects, and then, um, $25,000 appropriation from, uh, from the CIT to do an adaptive reuse study for Winterbath Fire Station that I believe Counsel McKenna has, uh, uh, agreeance in, but I'm happy to answer any questions on, on those requests, thank you.
Any, any questions?
All I can say is I'm very happy about that, Rich, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, if there are any questions, uh, the will of the council is to vote on it, uh, I believe we can vote on these. If there are no objections?
I believe that would be helpful, because I believe these matching funds, uh, uh, better served sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Thank you.
Agreed. We'll have two roll calls for this.
The first is, shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $80,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the park grant match fund? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti.
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved, and shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $25,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the, I'm sorry, to the Department of Planning and Community Development, Winthrop Avenue Fire Station account? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky is absent. Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti.
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Calendar item.
We'll, we'll, we'll see in a couple days.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Natividad Hernandez to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
We're gonna refer these, this to appointments?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the City Council adopt a new form of compensation that would negate the current salary structure in its entirety and convert to a strict and straightforward method of compensation based on public meetings attended. This proposal would compensate elected members of the City Council $100 per meeting for only meetings they attend, and only if such meeting is attended. This is in the interest of creating transparency to the voters in implementing a fair and just salary structure.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, you know, at our last regular meeting, a motion was submitted, um, that was asking for the City Council to draft an ordinance that will deduct a percentage of a city councillor's salary for missing meetings. I mean, I'm just looking to my left and my right today, we've got people out with COVID, right? And I think at the last meeting, I had stated that, you know, we don't work for each other. We get elected by the voters, and so if the sole mission here is to compensate city councilors by the meetings they attend and not the job they do, the phone calls they return, uh, you, you know, personally, I think that's a slippery slope. In all the years that I've sat on the City Council, I have not heard a councillor indirectly go after other councilors for their attendance. That's, that's insane to me, because we go out on, in early November, every two years to get, to get elected. We put ourselves before the voters, and if we're not gonna give the voters enough credit to understand who's doing their job and who isn't, then shame on us, we're gonna sit up here and govern each other? I think that's crazy. So, my alternative, and I started thinking about it, okay, if that's gonna be the basis for how this council is compensated, I think if you ask the voters, I think $100 a meeting is pretty fair, let's just get paid based on meetings we attend. That would solve the problem, and then if councilors don't show up, they don't get paid. And, you know, the savings, we can put that into, I, I see a motion here about school safety, I see, uh, you know, uh, you know, this cause, I mean, you know, we're always talking about tax relief. So if that, if that, if that's something that we want to pursue, at least this will give us the beginning of a basis of a conversation, um, you know, uh, you know, to maybe, maybe talk about something that if we're gonna go down that road about the, you know, the number of meetings, you know, what, you know, I, I think that, I think that, I think if, if that's the road we want to go, then this could be the crux or the basis of, of a discussion. So I just wanted to submit this motion, and I hope my colleagues, uh, I hope my colleagues are willing to discuss it. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counsel Keith.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, through, uh, well, just on, on, on the merits of the motion, and, uh, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, Counselor Rizzo, and, uh, I know that this was brought up a few meetings ago, um, and I can't speak for the maker of the motion, but I could tell you that, you know, you spoke well on it in, in suggesting that the, the voters ultimately will choose and, and govern, you know, the role in the job that we do. Um, and I think that that was, you know, well said, uh, and I agree, and I do agree with you. Um, I also do agree that from the, our legislative standpoint, from the, the voting, uh, portion of our, our role, uh, the residents do expect us to, you know, represent them here. And sometimes we have family emergencies, we do have illness, of course, uh, and, and sometimes we have really important things, events in our lives that are, quite frankly, sometimes more important than a vote that maybe isn't so substantial. Um, so I can understand where you're coming from there, uh, and I hope you can understand where, where I'm saying. I, I think that we're, we are probably going down a slippery slope when we start doing this, this, um, uh, fining each other or whatnot, that, that's probably not the role we should be playing for each other. But I do want to just kind of, I feel like I, I could understand the maker of the original motion. There was probably some frustration, and not towards anyone in particular, but quite frankly, the first quarter of this year, the, the attendance for the City Council was probably a little, little bit undesirable for some. We had a few meetings where we weren't able to fully vote on, um, certain plans or programs or whatever it may be, because, you know, a party was up here trying to get something, uh, they weren't able to get enough votes, so they were withdrawing and pushing it forward and playing all these political, uh, uh, games, because they knew that they didn't have enough council support. And again, not pointing out anyone specifically, but that did happen, and it was a little embarrassing. I was one of, I was excited, I was like, hey, they didn't show up, it's a no vote. One of the projects I was against, I thought was gonna get, you know, voted down, and whatever. It didn't happen, everything went forward, I'm okay with it, but ultimately, the attendance, again, there have been some extenuating cir- circumstances this year, and again, you're talking about COVID, the last couple of years has been a lot of extenuating circumstances, but I think there was probably a level of frustration with the attendance this year, um, early on in this year. So that may have come out in the form of a quick motion, uh, and I certainly don't think that us as professionals, us as respectful individuals, and we do respect each other, to start doing, um, this, you know, please understand, this tit-for-tat motion. I would think that we could all be, uh, men and women about it, and professional, and just self-manage, and, 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 and respected at that, and thank you, and hope you understand that.
Mr. President, just as a point of information, then I'll stop, I, I do have a comment, but as, as a point of information, this is not a tit-for-tat motion. The motion was brought up about, you know, transparency and working for the voters, this, I thought, could be a viable option. This wasn't a tit-for-tat motion.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, and just, just to be clear, this was not aimed at any one person, this is aimed at a body of, of representatives who get voted on by the voter. We don't make millions of dollars up here, that's a fact, probably don't get paid enough, but we put ourselves on a ballot, we get elected by the people, and we should show up here every chance we can. A death, a sickness, illness, those are all viable excuses, but just to miss one meeting after another, after another, not have a forum, not be able to vote on things, when we have a subcommittee meeting, two members show up. As far as I'm concerned, it's unacceptable. Counselor, I greatly appreciate your input, and I, and I hope that you don't take this as, as a, a direct aim at anyone in particular. I feel as though, being new to the council, I look, we have no structure on how to police ourselves or, or be policed. We, we have no, we have no standards to, 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 to go by. We have no policies or procedures in place that keep us accountable in any way, shape or form, and as far as I'm concerned, we are a city council, we hold ourselves to a higher standard, and we need to, to, to be at that standard at all times. And if there's nothing in place to keep us there, then it's, it's, it's shameful, and I, I truly believe that, and yes, I was part of the maker, maker of that motion, I stand by it, and, um, I don't know another job anywhere in the world that you don't show up, you have no repercussions in doing so, and you will still be paid to do that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think Counsel Silvestri said most of what I wanted to say. Uh, I do want to reiterate, this wasn't any, this was not an indirect attack on anyone. It is, again, all about accountability. Um, you know, we've had 20 absences, it's not undesirable, it's unacceptable. You know, we, this, we're not paid to, to take phone calls, we're not paid to answer emails, we're paid to be here. We can't put a 311 ticket in to vote on monies to go from one account to the other. This is where we need to be, we're required, required to be here, or we should be required to be here. You know, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say about this. We, we, as you said, we already don't get paid enough for the amount of work that we do, so, thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just respond, because there's a fundamental disconnect here from, from the last two explanations that I've heard. I mean, we are not employees of the city, we're elected officials. of the city. We're elected officials. We, we, we are not employees. You might feel like an employee, but you're an elected official. The voters are the ones who put us here. It is not up to you to count absences and who's not here and why don't you have a quorum? You, you show up and you, and you represent the voters. I don't even understand what we're even talking about. I, I mean, I've been here, I, I first served on this city council 22 years ago. And I can appreciate, we've got a couple of new councilors, they're aggressive, they want to, you know, go out there for the taxpayer and they, you know, and they've proven themselves in their first five or six months in office that they can attend meetings. But, you know, it all goes back to my motion that's on the, on the table right now is, you know, like the, you know, you know, like the prior speaker just said, we don't get paid for phone calls, we don't get paid for that, we get paid for meetings. Well, then my, I think my motion has some merit. And I think that $100 a meeting would make sense. I mean, if we're going to sit here and say, you know, when I first joined the city council, Mr. President, we used to go every Monday to meetings. We meet twice a month now, once in the summer. Okay? I mean, you know, there are going to be circumstances where councilors can't make meetings. And, you know, to have, to have councilors come up here and dictate other councilors what they can and can't do is, is, I've never even heard of anything remotely like that. So my motion's going to stand if, you know, you want to shoot it down or you want to put it in committee, whatever you are, that, you know, like, that's your call, Mr. President. But I think that they need to, I, there needs to be an understanding about our role in the city.
I, I agree.
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President, and, and Counselor, I appreciate your time spent in office, 22 years. You've done amazing work for the city of Revere. And at one time, you had four meetings a month or five meetings a month. So I think it, you proved my point, to be honest, in saying that with two meetings, we should be here. Thank you, Mr. President.
We're gonna, I'll give you the last speaker, then I'll, I'll final, I'll speak finally.
Yeah. I understand the motion. I personally think it's retaliatory to the motion Counselor Silvestri and I filed. But last week, there was a comment made. You said if people aren't happy with your attendance or the job that you're doing, they can simply not vote you in. So if 3,200 people called you today and said, we're not happy with your attendance, you're simply going to say, don't vote for me next time? Is that what you're saying? Because...
Well, if, if that question is directed to me, the voters are going to call me and ask me if they're going to vote for me next November. They're not going to ask me today about, or they're not going to ask Councilor Novoselsky or Rotundo or anyone else that misses a meeting. I mean, there are extenuating circumstances, but there, you know.
I'm gonna, okay. I, I think, I really think we need to put this, this is actually going to go into legislative affairs. And I think we need to put this to rest. And I'm just going to end on, on this note that we have so many more important things that is going on in the city. Okay? And to some degree, I understand, wait a minute, some degree, I understand what your intentions were. But I also agree with my colleague, Counselor Rizzo, is that we are elected by the residents of this city. And we do not police ourselves. Okay? It's, there's nothing up here. It's not my job, or a council president's job, to call the treasurer's office and say, well, I'm going to deduct so-and-so $50 because he didn't attend a meeting and calculate that out. I, I disagree when you say the job is to just be here. I think it's part of the job, I said, but there are many hours that are spent outside this council chambers that is all part of being a city counselor. And I'm sure Counsel, Vice President Counselor Serino will attest to that for all the emails and work that he does behind the scenes and all of the councilors do, I should say. But I just, I talked to Counselor Serino about that multiple times. And I'm sure all the ward councilors get more calls than our at-large councilors. But there is a lot of work that's done outside these council chambers that is all part of the job. And I just want to put, I think we should work, rather than nitpicking each other, I think we should work collaboratively and get some work done with, that has to be done in the city. I'm not, I'm not looking to nitpick anybody here. I just want to move the, the process forward and, and get some things that need to be done, have it done. So I'm going to leave it on that note, and we're going to put this into legislative affairs. Thank you.
Mr. President, we can't do anything, you know, get anything done unless we're here. We're not allowed to vote from home, so we have to be here to vote.
We, we do. And the, I think there was, what Counselor Keith attested to, okay, they, the applicant, we had enough people in here to vote for that. They opted, and somebody opted to postpone, okay, that vote, if I do recall. So we did have the votes, okay, to vote on, on that item. But it was one of the councilors' decision to postpone that vote because of maybe some, some, some colleagues weren't here. But it was that colleague's decision to do that. So I'm going to end it on that note, and we're going to send this to legislative affairs. Thank you.
Counselor item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Morabito that the mayor investigate the feasibility of including a line item in the FY '23 budget for additional funding for any public school safety measures that the school committee deems necessary.
Counselor Morabito. Thank you. First, let me offer some clarification. The city council does not have any jurisdiction over the school committee, nor does the city council have the authority to create and change the school's policy, procedure, budget, and curriculum. Though we do not oversee the school committee and the school system, we as a city council do have the responsibility of approving the school budget as a whole each year. Also, we can make recommendations for the mayor to provide funding to schools. We also have the responsibility of acting in the best interest of the city. And being that these schools are in our city, we have every right to be cautious and take precaution. With the recent senseless shootings in Uvalde and across the country, each and every one of us throughout the city and the world have every right to be deeply concerned about school safety. Our schools should be a beacon for safety for our teachers, faculty, and especially our students. This is why I feel it is imperative that we request the mayor to add a line item to the budget to support our colleagues on the school committee and the superintendent to ensure safety measures at our schools by providing funds as, as the school committee deems necessary, based on a feasibility study. And I hope my colleagues will join me in showing support to the school committee.
Thank you. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I want to commend Counselor Morabito on that motion. Obviously, school safety, there's not many things you can think of that are more paramount than keeping kids safe while they're in school. The only recommendation I would have before we start adding line items into a city budget is that we go to our state delegation and see, because this is not just a Revere situation, it's a, it's schools all over the Commonwealth. And I would like to see if there's a way possibly that Representative Janino and Representative Turco could get a line item in their budget that would trickle down to communities across the Commonwealth. I mean, if that didn't work, then I, you know, maybe we could go to the taxpayers and ask them, you know, to, to, you know, help fund school safety. But I think that an issue like this, where it affects everybody across the Commonwealth, might be worth at least asking our state delegation, you know, to see if they can make additional appropriations for school safety. That's just my one recommendation, Mr. President.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a school teacher for 32 years, I know after Sandy Hook, Revere put a number of safety ish, safety precautions in the school system. I know that in the Susan B. Anthony, you have to get buzzed in and then you have to go right into the office and you have to show your ID. I know at Revere High School, when you come into Revere High School, there are two security guards there, and we do have police presence in the school, just in case there is, yes, we have a school officer. So I think there are safety precautions available right now. I think maybe everything needs to be increased, and there's room for, you know, improvement. But right now, I think Revere's pretty well doing a fine job with security issues, you know, precautions. Thank you.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you. So I also want to say, the school committee had meetings recently to discuss security measures. The reason, and my intent for this motion is to give them backing based on a feasibility study, because state has already created their budget. It is, they have created their budget, cities are now distributing their budgets. So I think it would be reassuring to the people throughout the community, the parents, the teachers, the school committee, knowing that they can have a cushion if they don't have a specific amount based on a feasibility study and they're, what they deem is necessary to increase security measures. We should have a line item in our budget just to ensure the safety of our students and its schools. Thank you.
Okay. With the budget hearings coming up, what we can do is put this in ways and means and, and discuss it further. If there's no objection, ways and means?
Counselor item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the chief of police to install a security camera in or increase patrols at Jacobs Park on Hastings Street. Recently, there has been an increase in the dumping of bulk items in the park.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Counselor item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor, school committee superintendent, and city council hold a joint meeting or a joint executive session to discuss what security protocols are in place to ensure the safety of our children during school.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Seems like my fellow councilors to my left here, our hearts and minds are in the same place. I actually filed this motion before I knew about the school committee security and safety subcommittee that was happening. I don't believe it was on their agenda. But I did have a conversation with Chairwoman Susan Gravellisi about this. There's going to be a lot more discussion coming up on security. I would love to see a line item for security measures as well. I do want to say that from, you know, previously as a security professional, we definitely need to do more training. I know that you can buzz into a school and they let you in. But what's to stop someone from doing what they did the other day here? And so we need to absolutely explore better security opportunities for our schools. And I, at this point, I would like to table this motion because of the, the, I'm sorry, that's so distracting, because of the conversations or the, the meetings the school committee is going to be having. Thank you.
We can table that. Table, place on file? Or table, place on file? Table, table it?
Counselor item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Keith that the mayor request the police department to update the school department and the city council on school safety protocol and active shooter preparedness.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Much like Counselor Cogliandro and Morabito had talked, obviously, it stinks when something happens in the national or, in the nation that we all have to reflect on how it impacts us locally. But we get the call. So I certainly don't want to grandstand in the light of another tragic school shooting event. But I've received a number of calls and messages from concerned parents. And I also go home, much like a few of you. You go home and you see your, your family and your children, and you have to answer to them. So I, and I appreciate watching recently, School Committee Woman and Chairman Gravellisi and their school safety update. It addressed a number of topics and concerns that I had been questioned about from some of my residents and brought up a lot of key points to the surface. And I have full confidence in the school committee's ability. I also have full confidence in the police department and the city of Revere in maintaining a safe school environment. But when we talk about what could we do more or what, what items in, in areas may need to be addressed, and certainly some of this may need to be done in an executive session, we don't want to, you know, give the recipe to someone that may have bad intentions. I do believe that the community as a whole has to be involved. So as mentioned, and I would like to have more of a, a group, a committee of the whole between the school committee and the city council. Certainly don't want to stop their progress. But I don't want to go back years from now or a few months from now. And there are people that talk to us. They, you know, we, we talk to a lot of people in the school, we talk to a lot of people in, in the police department, we talk to a lot of people that are just residents. And someone always has a really great idea. I just want to make sure that those resources are being used to the fullest. We have a number of SROs. I don't, I'm not quite sure if every SRO is assigned or if we have as many as the grant funding that we receive. We should, right? We should utilize that grant funding to the maximum potential. And then certainly when the SROs come to us with a plan or bring it to the school department with a plan, that's, that's the plan. Those are the security professionals. Those are the people that we listen to, and those are the ones that are ultimately going to protect us, along with the school administration and people that work there that is, you know, security professionals or, or administrators. We cannot let political, and this isn't, this isn't necessarily in Revere, but we can't let national political opinions dictate how we secure the most vulnerable residents in our schools. And we cannot allow that. Again, I'm not suggesting that's happening here, but I want to make sure it's not. So that's the, that's the uncomfortable conversation that I think we need to bring to light. Are we utilizing our resources effectively? And are we, are we doing enough? Certainly, we have a great school system. We don't have these types of incidents. But I don't want to look back and hear, yep, that was a recommendation we had, that door, that exit, that entrance, that facility, the number of people, et cetera. I don't want to ever have that conversation down the road saying we could have, should have. Okay? So that's the intent of my motion. This is certainly not to take any of the liberties away from the school committee, because I know that they do a fantastic job. And again, I want to stress that I have the utmost confidence in them. But I think it's important that we bring all of the stakeholders in the room to make these types of decisions. Thank you.
No further questions on this? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Counselor item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor request the chief of police to provide the city council with an explanation as to the closing of the police substation on Pleasant Street.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to amend the motion to also include the closing of the substation on Shirley Avenue as well. These substations, over, you know, over the years, serve a very, very useful purpose. When the police station used to be here, it was kind of right in the middle of the city, so it was, you know, accessible to everybody. Now, since we moved the police station down onto the Revere Beach Parkway, we really had no presence up around City Hall or, you know, throughout our central business district. So the substation that we had across the street here served a very useful purpose. It was a very busy place. The residents loved it. They had a place to go, whether it was to get fingerprinted, whether it was to, you know, make a complaint, just to talk to a police officer. In fact, we used to have walking patrols as we're... As we're coming into the summer now, I'm starting to get very cognizant of, you know, we saw these flash mobs that occurred down the beach. Now granted, that has nothing to do with the substations, but, you know, in terms of, you know, protecting the public, making sure that the public knows where they can go if they have a complaint, to have to go down Revere Beach Parkway, and I can't imagine with the closing of these substations what that probably means to the station itself. I mean, these substations were very busy. These people are going somewhere. Either that, or even worse, they're not going anywhere and they don't feel as though they're being served. So, I'd like an explanation. Quite honestly, I'd like to see them open back up. But I at least want an explanation as to the logic behind closing them. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other questions? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by councillor McKenna, that the mayor request the city solicitor and the director of municipal inspections to provide an update on McMackenfield relative to any movement on an eminent domain taking and/or land taking due to non-payment of property violations.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, now with the summer months here, McMackenfield is overgrown and in disarray. And so, I'm just asking, I know there's a little movement with the owners of McMackenfield and the city. If the city solicitor could come up in front of the council and whatever he can say, give the public some knowledge of what's being taken place. This is a regular call I get on a daily basis. People don't know that it's privately owned, so they're saying, "Why isn't the city doing anything? Why isn't the city cleaning it up? Why is it left like this?" Well, it's left like this because it's privately owned. The city is trying to take it over. So, I'm asking if the city could contact the owners and have it groomed. I'm also getting feedback from residents that a landscaper is dumping their waste in this land. So, I would like the city to just see if that's happening. The other thing is, I would like to put an amendment on the floor for the park to be sprayed for mosquitoes. I know we haven't had any rain, and so there's no excuse that the landscaper can't get down with his landscaping truck and clean it up. It really is in disarray, and it's just, it's a sore thumb for the city to see this, go by this, and see the way it is. So, and nothing's been done for at least a year. So, that's what I'm asking, and I want the city to just look at if a landscaper is dumping the landscaping waste in that plot of land. Thank you.
No comments? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by councillor Morabito, that the city council request the city clerk to purchase an ADA compliant podium for the city council chamber.
Councillor Morabito. Thank you. Accessibility to city government is necessary, and it is very important for public participation throughout the city. And I think if we have a podium that is equipped with customizable features that meet ADA standards, this will allow speakers who use wheelchairs to present and speak before the city council, and they can do it comfortably. And I hope I can have my council's support with that.
Any comments? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. And before we conclude, we have a couple of point of personal privilege. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize, today is June 6th. Today, 78 years ago, was one of the largest, actually is the largest sea-born and airborne battle in history. Allied forces of many countries, over 156,000 troops, put their lives on the line and actually changed the war in itself. And I think, I just wanted to recognize that. Today is what's better known as D-Day, and if we could have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate a couple of the different groups of athletics at the city, at Revere High School, in their spring sports. Sometimes we bring them up here, but there's a lot of different athletics that I just wanted to recognize, some outstanding achievements. Women's lacrosse, coach Amy Roger, they won the GBL championship this year. Great job, women's lacrosse. Women's and men's track and field, coach Sam Ross and Raquel McDonald won the GBL champs. And the men's, I believe, ascending four young men to their national championships this month. Volleyball, coached by, men's volleyball coached by coach O'Hara, placed second in the GBL and also made the tournament. And also the men's baseball team coached by Mike Manning, second in the GBL, 13-7 record, and also had a tournament berth with their best regular seasons record in probably the last 20-plus years. So, congratulations to the men's baseball team. That is all. Thank you.
If I can end on wishing, tomorrow is graduation, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Can I have a point of personal? Very much. Sorry. I just want to commend veteran service director Mark Silvestri for organizing a very, very heartfelt ceremony. I was unable to be there, but I watched it on television, and I thought it was remarkable. So, I want to give him a round of applause. Also, today is Pride Month, June 1st begins Pride Month for the LGBTQ+ community, so I want to say Happy Pride Month. Also, Revere will be celebrating Juneteenth on June 18th. They will be having a barbecue. You can go on the website to find out more information. And also, I would like to have a moment of silence for all the victims and those impacted in all the shootings across the country. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President.
No worries. Councillor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry to hold up adjournment here, but councillor Keith just got my wheels turning. The Revere High Boys Track Team qualified for the Nike Outdoor Nationals, and I just want to let you know, they raised over $10,000. And I just talked to coach Sam today, and they were able to pay for all the tickets and everything to go. I also just want to give a quick shout-out to Sergeant DJ Hickey and Officer Singer on their fights the other night at Oceanside. Great job.
Mr. President, I apologize. I think I said Veterans Day instead of Memorial Day. If I did, I apologize. Mr. Silvestri organized a great Memorial Day event. I apologize.
No worries. And I will just conclude again by saying, tomorrow is graduation for Revere High students. I want to personally wish them, on behalf of the entire city council, congratulations for four interesting years, I will say. And you persevered, and I wish you, and I'm soon, I'm going to speak on behalf of the entire city council, that we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. So, enjoy graduation, it's well deserved. Thank you. And this will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. And the next, we have budget hearings coming up this week, as well as next week, and our final budget meeting will be on the 16th. Thank you.